Welcome to come back to order if we can, and we'll proceed on with the next portion of our procedure for the hearing. We are now down to testimony and questions by those opposing the application. What I'd like to do is get a show of hands of how many would like to have either have questions or testimony opposing the application. Okay? All right. Just hold your hands up a minute if you would. All right, and let's get you sworn in, and then we'll get your name and address as you come forward to make your comments. Ms. Nunn?
Okay. Please stand. Do you tell me swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Okay. All right, who would like to go first? It doesn't matter, whatever, just come on forward and we'll get your name and address.
I'm taking my, I'm bringing my phone with me because I've got some notes that were sent to me from folks that live in that area that weren't able to be here. So if you see me look at my phone, it's because I'm looking at texts they sent.
That's fine.
My name is Kay McHone. I have lived in, my address is 1802 Gran Villa Drive in La Grange.
Would you spell your last name, please?
Yes. M-C-H-O-N-E.
Okay.
Formerly Kay Webb. I used to own the all-state office in Crestwood. I know a lot of you, your faces, from when I was in Chamber and previous community events that we had. But I would like to say, my concern is, first off, the timing of this meeting during the day, and that's the reason I have some texts here from people that weren't able to attend, nine o'clock in the morning for working folks, it's hard for them to get here. And I know that they, there were some different folks that said that they had meetings with people in our communities. I was not aware of those meetings, and no one else that I have talked to here was aware of any meetings with the community. Also, I guess I'd just like to, and you don't have to tell me, that's totally your thing, how many of you on the commission live in that area? If you do, you already know that there's a lot of congestion on that corner, just pulling in and out of that area every day. So I can't imagine adding another business on that corner is not going to cause more congestion than we already have, and accidents and things that would, there'd have to be some, a lot of changes made. And quite honestly, a lot's going to be a lot more noise. You can't help it. People are going to be pulling trucks in there, trailers. It's, you know, you can sugarcoat it any way you want to, but it's a storage building. And it's going, you can pretty it up and put your bushes around it and everything else, but immediately when you see a storage building going into a community, you think of lowering the property values. I can't imagine, and Ms. Davis, you actually did the appraisal on my home where I am in Gran Villa right now. I moved from Blakemore Lane out in La Grange, so if you're all familiar with that area. But I can't imagine, and I also have my real estate license, that seeing, having proper, having a storage building close to your home is not going to take down the property value. It's got to. It's just, it's just the, just the appearance of that. And I understand that that property was zoned heavy-duty commercial. I don't know where I was at that time, and I doubt if anybody in that community was involved with those rulings to change it to that. I'm sure they would have been against it knowing. And Mr. Wright, Mr. Rollins, he gave the list of things that could be there, and it made it sound like, out of all those things that we had to choose from, oh, this is the best of all the worst case, you know, best of the worst-case scenario. Well, I understand it's commercial property, and eventually someone's going to be, something would be built there, but I think there could be something that would be chosen that would be a, an addition to the community that would, that would increase the value of the homes, not have more noise nor more congestion, and be a, help the value of our homes instead of taking it down. Let me see if there's anything that I missed. I mean, I think that over the plans, they said the variance, the variance was, you know, wasn't there, there wasn't enough, so why are we trying to push it into that small space? The folks that, one last thing I'd like to say is, the folks that are, you know, the owner of the property evidently doesn't live right there, close by, he lives, you know, in another area. The developers are in Louisville, Washford Avenue. You know, they're not right there. We are. It's affecting us, not them. There, it's easy for them to come in, build it on this property, and then leave. And they're getting the funds from that, or whatever the proceeds might be. But I appreciate that. I just, I just think that we, that we can have something on that corner that would be a compliment to our community, not bringing property evaluations down, and having more noise, congestion, and more opportunity for accidents in that road. And I'm sure, again, if you've been on that road pulling out, it's hard to get out right now, let alone if there's another business right there, the way that that would have to come in. And trailers and things that would have to be going through there with storage. Thank you.
Again. All right, next.
Mark Teich, 5109 Villa Place Drive, La Grange, Kentucky. In the interest of full disclosure, I am a county employee. I work in an apartment that is a sub-department, Planning and Development. Wanted to make sure that my testimony here is purely as a resident of the community, and has absolutely nothing to do with my occupation. Felt like that was appropriate that I disclosed that. To look at what we're looking at here, there's one thing I want to agree with the applicant on right off the bat. Under the strict requirements, yep, that property's undevelopable. I'll agree with him on that. What I think we're looking at here is an unfortunate piece of zoning. When Cedar Point Road was rerouted through that property, the big track, or Ralcorp, Conagra, whatever, that was all part of that track. So that other little track, which would be to the right of Cedar Point Road coming off 146, got left as a little piece of I-2. It was obvious that was probably too small for I-2, because I-2 requires such large setbacks. That being said, when you come in on Cedar Point now, over the years, and I've been there 25 years, everything to the right is residential. To the left, we have, we have a big industrial development. I knew that property was zoned I-2 when I bought it there. I didn't say a word when they wanted to build it. It's back off the road, it's properly burned, it's landscaped. I happen to, some people might disagree, I think it's kind of an asset to the community because that's one heck of a tax base sitting right there that we can certainly use. So to move forward from that, to use it as it's zoned, they're asking for enormous variances. Typically, when I think of a variance, and I don't know how you all feel about it, I think, okay, we need a little something here to make this work. I've got an irregular property line. I've got this, that, and I just can't quite maintain that. That's what I think of when I think of a variance, and I don't know if anyone else agrees with me, that's how I see it. But when I start looking at 64%, 73%, 67%, 33%, 50%, those are the size variances that you're being asked to grant. In my book, those aren't variances. That's a request, can we just do away with the rules? Okay? And I think that's an unreasonable request that we do that. When I look at some of their justifications, and this one, this one kind of, I don't clearly understand. They talked about the property, it was unfortunate that it was zoned I-2. Well, when you bought it, it was zoned I-2 with those setbacks, so I'm a little confused about what's unfortunate about that. Is it your decision to buy it? Maybe that is what's unfortunate about. So, don't really get that. You know, from the standpoint of, is it going to harm public safety, welfare? I don't think so. But it is going to create a visual nuisance. Long, solid walls and fencing. There's no breaks, there's nothing to look at. You know, you can cover things up and decorate them up however you want to, but mini-storage is mini-storage. To move on a little bit further on that, when you all look at whether you want to approve this, or whether you don't want to approve it, one of the things that you have to look at, and one of the things that you're charged with, does this approval unreasonably circumvent the regulations of the zoning? I think we're looking at unreasonable variance requests, so I think it does unreasonably circumvent the regulations of the zoning. The other thing that I'd like to comment on is there were some discussions on, well, what else could it be? Zoned I-2. I think that's, I think that's appropriate, but what I think you have to look at is there are certain things that are only allowed in I-1 and I-2. There's lots of other things that are allowed there that we also allow in our commercial districts. We allow them in office districts. We allow them somewhat in some of our residential districts. Mini-storage and self, self, mini-warehouse, self-storage is only a permitted use in I-1 and I-2. It is not a permitted use in any other zoning. That being said, we obviously only permitted it in I-1 and I-2 because we wanted the big setbacks. We wanted that. This was the type of facility that we didn't want up close to the road, or up close to residential. I think that speaks for itself from that standpoint, that that's what we were looking for. Now, back to some of the others. I've lived there 25 years. Hey, they've had a sign out there for a long time advertising outlaw its retail or office space release. I kind of expected that was what was going to eventually happen. That's why we have C-1. It's why we have office districts, because those are designed to be very compatible with residential where they abut. And those do require some setbacks. They also tend to be, design-wise, a bit more compatible with residential. Let's see. Check the rest of my notes here.
I want to speed you up, but we've got seven folks that want to testify, and I want to make sure they hit.
I'll tell you what, I think I'll wrap it up there. I think I basically said what I need to say. Thank you very much, thank you for your indulgence.
All right. Thanks.
Good morning. Robert Kiefer, K-I-E-F-F-E-R, 5102 Cedar Ridge Drive, La Grange, Kentucky. Gran Villa subdivision, lived there 24 years.
Okay.
The information here is fine, but it doesn't cover, the pictures that you took out there, from when you're driving on 1817, you can turn right, or you can turn left when you come to 146. You have, you are required by the markings on the road to set back when you're making a left turn. If you look south, Treehouse has put their sign 10 feet too close to the road, you can't see anything, so you have to pull up. Also, when you turn left, there are signs there right now advertising other properties further down 1817. You can't see turning left, so you've got to pull up further than you should to be a safe turn. So if you're there at high traffic times, or any time, you can't see. Now, you put the variance there 36 feet from the road, you're not going to see anything when you try to turn left from 1817. That's why the I-2 has got the variances to be set back so that you can properly see to make turns. That's my biggest complaint, is you can't see the turn right now because the Treehouse sign for the warehouse, that should be moved back at least 10 feet to the right so that you can see. You can't see a thing. And there's also the current signs that are there when you turn left, you can't see either. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, who would like to go next? All right.
Ron Thacker, 1814 Gran Villa Drive.
What's your last name, sir?
Ron Thacker, T-H-A-C-K-E-R.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, they uncovered the biggest part of the things I want to say. First of all, I don't think that we need them out on the main road. We're supposed to be beautifying Oldham County, and I wouldn't think that would be, put something like that right out in the middle before you even go into a little town like Buckner. And we've got industrial parks that are empty. If we're going to start doing this here, putting buildings where they ain't supposed to be, changing setback lines, why build up, spend all the county money building all these industrial parks? This thing here is showing 36-foot of road frontage. We're going to put trees there. There's supposed to be a fence going around it. I haven't seen where that fence is at yet, nobody's explained where it is. If it's like the one they got on Commerce Parkway, I don't know if you all been by there, they got sheds there. And it looks like, look like garbage. You go up there, right off the edge of the road, you've got a fence going down. That ain't the way Oldham County's supposed to be. And like she said, when you come out of our subdivision there on Cedar Point Road, in the morning, they've been talking about putting up a street light. And that ain't going to happen. They've been going to do something, the 393, going into Buckner, going into 146 for 50-some years. They used to have a cop up there, I don't even know where they have him, but you still got the same problem. But that's the main thing, you can't see out. They talked about making the road wider. Well, you can't make the road wider if you take all the road for sheds. They say we need a turning lane up where the schools are. But where are they going to get the land? We keep letting them change the setback lines. Okay, when you come out, they're going to put a chain link fence, they're going to plant trees. As he said, you can't see out of it now, and when you go to pull out, you're taking your life in your hands because the guy leaves a 3, 146 coming toward Crestwood, but he makes that last curve, he bashes it on the gas, they're going, it might be 35 miles an hour, but they're doing 45 or 50 the time they get to that street. So I don't, I don't think we need it there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, who'd like to go next?
My name is Kevin Durbin, 1826 Gran Villa Drive. I live in the house that Dan built. Good morning. My name is, as I said, Kevin Durbin. I'm the president of the Gran Villa Homeowners Association, 14-year resident of Gran Villa. And my thoughts today for you are a collection of thoughts from many of our residents, as well as our residents in Cedar Point Village, and some in Stonefield Trace. I haven't had a chance to speak with you since the Ralcorp-Conagra Treehouse project, so it's, I really appreciate the opportunity for us to have this discussion. I'm also here as an Oldham County resident, businessman, and a community servant. So again, I appreciate that. My comments today concern the nature of the proposed project, not the fact that the property can or should be developed, and that it will need reasonable variances for that to happen as we saw in some of the projections here. I'm not here to discuss what's legal, but, but what is actually in the best, what we believe to be in the best interest of the Oldham County residents in our neighborhood. The things I would like you to take away from this are really around the quality of life issues concerning lighting. Some of these have already been spoken to, stormwater runoff, and maybe there's, maybe there are plans for that, I'm sure there are, but we haven't heard that. Safety from a visibility of the turning from Cedar Point Road onto 146, that's been mentioned, and I would say that's a large consideration and a concern for all of our residents. Proximity of the buildings, someone described it as a wall to our neighbors in Cedar Point Village, and the effect on property values, not just for Cedar Point Village, but also for Gran Villa and the surrounding residences. I think one of the key points is the reduction of variances for this project by the percentages, somewhat circumvent the spirit of why those variances are in place in the first place, not just for turning onto 146, but there's a reason that those industrial variances are in place. The, another point I'd like to bring out is, in the application for waiver, the application states undue hardship. I just wanted to read this, I'm not schooling anybody on this, you already know this, but with exceptional hardship, where the commission finds the strict compliance with these regulations would create an undue hardship because of exceptional, unique, topographic, or other natural or man-made physical conditions encountered on the particular land. That is not why we're, why we have variances, or why we're being requested to change the variances. It's strictly because of the nature of the property itself. I don't think there's any topographic issues with the land itself, it's about setbacks. We would like to have consideration for further discussion on this project, but as it stands right now, we strongly recommend disapproval of the project as proposed, and for the reasons that I stated. And to preserve the quality of life for our residents, especially the ones that are living in the Cedar Point Village area who will be literally adjacent to these, and in proximity of both the single-story and the two-story structure that will be put there. I want to thank you for your time and consideration on behalf of Gran Villa residents. It's been a, it's always been an honor to represent them, and to have a chance to share our views. I want to thank you for your sincere regard for the quality of life in Oldham County, and as our judge says, that's not for sale. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. All right, I had a couple other folks down, I think I wanted to speak.
Good morning. My name's Kurt Walter. I reside at 5105 Cedar Ridge Drive in La Grange, that's in the Gran Villa development. I've been there for 25 years. I have basically, just a second, a lot of what's already been said. My biggest concern is coming out of 1817, if you're turning north. One of the pictures, so a sign there, looking south. Unfortunately, when the gal took the picture the other direction, the sign wasn't in the way there. That sign obstructs your view, turning to the north there, where you actually have to pull out further. That is currently marked to see that you have right of way to go ahead and cross onto 146 going north. The other is the basic aesthetics of it. The aesthetics are very nice, but if you bring that building that far out, you're going to totally block that view. My other concern in the meetings that were supposedly held, we, I've never heard anything about, and this is the first meeting I heard anything about, and that's because of Kevin, our president, homeowner's president. I'd be interested to hear what the comments were of the folks that have houses that back up to this facility, knowing that when they look out their back door, they're going to see the back walls of this building. And that storage facility, this is a residential area, it's not an area where there's high condensation of apartment buildings or anything where these sort of units might be needed. We have areas in Oldham County, in the industrial park, for these sort of facilities. Just request that we keep them there. That's all I have to say. Thank you all very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thanks, sir. All right. I had one other person down that would like to speak, and we still have some time, so, you know, if anybody else wants to have, anything else to add, or anyone else that didn't stand up originally, you know, we'll certainly take that testimony at this point. Yes, sir?
I'd just like to ask a question.
Would just come on back up, please.
I just wanted to ask a question if, when the property was purchased, where all of these, it was zoned I-2, that's my understanding, is when the property was purchased, that it was, all these restrictions were in place? That was a question that a lot of our residents had.
Okay. I mean, they can address it if they want to, you know, it, that's up to you.
It doesn't have to be. Just like, just.
Yes, when this property, first of all, we have two different names of companies that we're dealing with here. We have Mason Construction Company, which is the applicant, and Buckner Properties, which is the owner of the property. These same restrictions, if you will, were in place, yes. But this property, and that's exactly why we have the commission, and exactly why we have waivers. When you sit down and make the law, make the ordinance, make the regulations for industrial zoning, when you're talking about heavy industrial, you're talking about the need for the normal of these tremendous setbacks. This property is only 2.98 acres, just under three acres, and it's not the norm for the industrial setting. And that's, that's why you have the authority and the power to grant waivers, because these are unique circumstances for the norm that we're speaking of here with industrial property and industrial uses. What has been proposed, what has-
Let me interrupt you just a second, just, I guess to answer his question or whatever, because it's kind of on there's time, and you'll definitely have an opportunity to respond or to, you know, rebuttal.
Okay. Well, the answer is yes. When the current owner purchased it, these same restrictions were in place, yes.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. All right, any additional testimony or questions for this application? Okay.
When, when you buy a house in Gran Villa, we've got restrictions. I used to be on the board. I have caught more heck over telling a person he cannot build a detached garage. And we've had people move out of the subdivision, I've been called all kinds of names. But that's what the papers say, this is what you got to do. This is no different. It's a eyesore, the county oughtn't even take a place in the considerations. That's, that closed on the main road, and that's about all I can say. The thing, they knew what the property was, and I know why they want to change it, I can understand that. But this right here, all it's going to do is tear up the neighborhood, and end up with somebody getting killed out there at the end of the road. You go down there today around, when the schools are let down, when it's busy, or early in the morning, if you're going to La Grange, you better go down the interstate, go around the loop, come back out on 393. That's how bad it is. And you're putting trees and things on 36-foot, you're going to have a fence on the outside of them, and you can't see. It's, it's a great piece of property, it could be done a whole lot of things, but you've got to be able to see to get out of houses. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. All right, anyone else before we move on here? Mr. Teich, did you see your hand? Okay. All right, we will now move into the questioning of the applicant and those opposing the application by the commission. Commissioners, do you have questions for either the applicant or the folks that have testified in opposition to this application? Any question? Mr. Finney.
This question would be for Mr. Perkins. It's been stated this morning that you are aware of the restrictions on this property when you purchased it. What was your intent for the property when you purchased it, knowing these restrictions?
Our intentions were to build a commercial strip center on the property.
Pardon?
Commercial strip center on the property, and maybe sell off the corner to a bank or to a fast-food restaurant. or to a fast food restaurant. That was our original intentions. We developed the Crestwood Crossing Shopping Center in Crestwood, behind McDonald's, the McDonald's site, and then the shopping center behind it. And this was going to be kind of an ongoing project after we filled that up. We got caught up in the downturn down, down there during that time, and we had a tough time leasing the space, so we kind of axed that idea. We tried to sell the property, several different people looked at it, and we just never could sell it. So I had come up with a plan to develop self-storage on it. I think it's a nice, clean use for the property, it's a quiet use for the property, it allows a barrier to the subdivision that's adjacent to the property. We had a meeting with all those folks, there was no one here from that subdivision that's complaining about the project. We just think that with the wall 25-foot from the property with the landscaping, we changed the wall structure to match the existing houses, the key homes built in the project with a hardy pike and a brick. We're trying to make it as, look as, as close to residential as we can for the area. All the fencing that's going to be on the property is going to be aluminum iron fencing around the, coming in the front gate, it'll be kind of like rod arm, but they, they built out aluminum now, it lasts longer. Any fencing between the two-story building and the one-story building that backs up to the property, that's all going to be black aluminum fencing. And then the gap over here between the building on 146, which 146 kind of turns away from the two-story building and heads away from it, all that's going to be aluminum fencing on that side. So, you know, we've, we've really put a lot into the architectural design of the buildings themselves, not to create a problem for the residents. I live in the area, I used to live in Grand Villa, I'm aware of the turning off of Cedar Point Road toward La Grange. I developed Cedar Point, or Heather Green subdivision, 1.4 miles down Cedar Point Road on the right-hand side. I'm there a lot. The, the turning situation, it was mentioned that there was, the property sets back 32 feet, I think it was 36 feet off the road, it's actually 36 feet off the, the property line, and it's about 65 feet off of 146. So there's, there should be ample room to build the building, put landscaping in along the building, including trees, and still be able to stack a couple cars, two or three cars where they can look toward La Grange and be able to turn left out that way, or towards I-71. I really don't have anything else to add. Do you have any other questions?
Did you ever consider a zoning change with a different type of business in there versus trying to stay with the industrial zoning?
That would be a downzone, and there's really no reason, I'm not sure what the setbacks are, for a different zoning. I guess it would be less. But there's really no difference whether you grant a variance or if you downzone the property to do the same, same self-storage. The problem right now with retail is it's being just killed. It's being killed by Amazon, it's, it's just hard to get anybody to buy this piece of property and build a commercial strip center for services for the area. One thing, there's not enough rooftops, is, this, these are things that we hear from people that call and inquire about the property. There's not enough rooftops in the area to support it. Same thing with office, offices getting killed, people are moving back home, working from their homes, companies are placing them back in their homes, they're getting rid of their big office spaces. So we're trying to find a use for it, and I just, this is what we came up with, I think it's a, it's a clean use. My father-in-law is also my partner, not in this project, but in other projects, and he owns three of these across the nation, and very well done. We've shared the, some of the photographs of those with planning and zoning, the, some of the other buildings that we've done in the area. We have, we, we spare no expense, we, we do it first class, along with my residential houses that I do in the area, so we plan on making this so that the community can point their finger at and, and be proud of. You know, and I think that there's a definite need for it in the area. There are other self-storage facilities in the area, and they're all full. Every one of them's full, you can't get space.
Mr. Finney, anything else?
Thank you very much.
Okay. Additional questions? Yes, sir, Mr. Douglas.
Uh, let's see, let's go with Mr. Hill first.
Yes, sir.
Originally, the property was deeded and plotted for 60-foot right-of-way on 146. Did the state authorize a change to the 50-foot right-of-way? Because your plan shows 50-foot right-of-way.
Right, the, there's an additional reserved area for future right-of-way dedication. That's factored into our design.
That's what I asked. I asked you, did the state give you authorization for 60, 50-foot right-of-way on your developmental plan? Because the deed at recorded plaque says 60-foot right-of-way. You've got 50-foot right-of-way from the center line.
Which would be 100-foot total right-of-way.
You're still not answering my question. My question is, it says on a deed at recorded plaque, Kentucky Highway 146, 60-foot right-of-way. On your developmental plan, you have 50-foot right-of-way. What happened to the other 10 feet for the right-of-way?
I think, Mr. Douglas, you're talking about the minor plaque that was recorded.
Yes.
Is that what you're speaking of?
Yeah.
I think that that's where the confusion's coming in.
Okay.
The minor plaque that was recorded shows 60-foot, and your plan shows 50. So Kentucky Transportation did review this plan, so I don't know if they, they changed the right-of-way, I'm not sure.
I don't know. That's why I'm asking, was there a request made, and was, do we have anything in writing from the state authorizing that change? Because I noticed on the turning radius, the minor plaque that was recorded subdivision plaque shows a 60-foot radius turn off of 146 into Cedar Point Road, and you have 50
Is this what you're talking about?
Yes, I mean, it's on... Right here, right there, right there.
They put that up on the screen if you could.
And then on this plaque, he's got 50-foot at the turning radius and 60-foot right-of-way on this plan. He's asking for a proposed right-of-way of 50 feet.
That's the existing, there's already an existing 60-foot right-of-way on Highway 146. The development plan shows that. They are proposing to add additional right-of-way to Highway 146 in addition to the already existing 60-foot right-of-way.
Well, it says here, proposed right-of-way dedication, 50 foot from center line.
That's additional.
That's additional?
Additionally, it's an additional 50 feet. I'm decreasing it. Yeah, it says at the bottom of the page, Kentucky Highway 146, 60-foot right-of-way.
But from...
Right, um, right here.
From the center line of 140, 146? That's not an additional 50 feet.
They're, they're, they're dedicating an additional 50 feet because we anticipate the relocation of 146 to straighten out the curve.
I know.
So they're, they're, they're dedicating an additional 50 feet on top of the original 60-foot.
From the center line.
Mr. Harris, let me get, let him, because...
It's an additional 20 feet of right-of-way.
Exactly, that's what I'm trying to get at.
Already exists. So they're, they're not dedicating that 30.
No.
It's already there, so it's an additional 20 feet of right-of-way.
Right. That's why I was trying to get a clarification, because he's got 50 feet on here, and it should be...
It's, it is 50 feet from the center line.
50 feet from the center line.
He's just not stating that 30 of that already is right-of-way.
Right.
Right.
And then the 30, so my question then will be is that, since that's proposed, you're dedicating 20 feet, you're asking for the 36-foot setback variance, correct? Or actually from, I guess it would be the 20 feet setback. And my question is that, what is the actual variance if the widening of 146 occurs? What will it be then? Because technically, we're giving you a variance for something that's proposed now, but my question is, did you take in consideration of that?
Yes.
Widening of 146?
Right. When we initially submitted the application, we used the dimensions, assuming the right, the right-of-way dedication had occurred. When staff processed the application and presented the information to you, they used the existing right-of-way to come up with the 36-foot number.
So in reality, the setback could be, I mean, it's going to be last green space there. So we're, we could be looking at...
But we designed the, our site based on the long-term right-of-way dedication occurring, so there wouldn't be an issue there with the buildings being in a place where the right-of-way dedication could not occur in the future if the state ever decides to do, do an improvement project on, on 146.
Okay. My next question to you, Mr. Hill, is that, I know Mr. Harris said that he spoke to somebody about the proposed detention basin area that's on it. Do you have any preliminary water flows off of that pervious surface that could be collected in that detention basin? And what would be the outflow?
The initial discussion was with myself and Mr. Harris and, and Mr. Urban and the planning staff. I'm not an engineer, I'm a planner, I'll admit that. And then a subsequent conversation occurred between an engineer in my office and Mr. Harris and/or Mr. Urban about the details of the detention. So I think what was decided was to agree conceptually to the idea of the detention plan at this preliminary stage, and then if approved, more research and analysis would be conducted to determine those specifics.
And since this is an I-2 proposed area, and I see storm drains and drainage pipes that, which is going to assume, and I guess you'll have to, you're not the engineer, I don't see where the outflow of those parking lot drainage go. I mean, there, I don't see any structure facilities going to that detention basin.
Can we switch back over to the site plan?
It looks like it, I'm not going to answer your own question, but it looks like to me it goes to the existing drainage stream in the back.
Yeah, the, the site flows now from, in this direction, generally. It all, it all flows towards that area, which is why the conceptual location for the detention basin is here. It's also why the adjacent subdivision has an inlet structure right here that leads to their detention basin, within a dedicated recorded sewer and drainage easement that extends to our property line. So the conceptual plan would be to capture all of our drainage, captured from our rooftops, within our parking lot, within our swale that we would construct along the property line, direct it to our detention basin, hold it, release it at the same or lesser rate than it is released now into that existing drainage easement within the Cedar Point subdivision.
Do you know what size of drainage easement goes into that subdivision?
There's a plaque here that I'm looking at, I think it's part of your report, it shows a 10-foot sanitary, well, that's a sanitary sewer easement, and it doesn't show the drainage, but adjacent...
I already looked, it didn't show.
Yeah, adjacent to that, there is a, drain easement, I'm sorry, I don't have the dimension, I don't know if anybody else has.
Because your, the proposed developmental plan shows the parking lot drains going to an existing stream, or you want to call it a, I guess it's water runoff area gully in the back, behind the residential. It doesn't show it going to the proposed detention basin.
Uh, it, it...
So you're not going to catch, capture it all into the detention basin?
Right. Well, this is conceptual, and the plan is to capture all of the drainage, and it's going to leave the parking lot in this location, and then this swale is going to carry it to the detention basin, where it's then released. The conceptual plan is for it to all end up in our detention basin and then released, with the details to be determined at construction plan with the help of the county engineer's office.
Doug, I think that's, that's the key here, is it's not, you know, those have not been designed yet as far as the, the details.
Right, but we're asked to approve something that won't take an effect on a residential area, a more outflow. But, and my second question would be, and you're not the engineer, so you can't answer it, so, would have been, if there's any illicit discharge in the storage units into the detention basin, what happens to the capture of that illicit discharge?
What, what do you mean by illicit discharge?
Gasoline runoff, oil runoff, things that the parking lot may have that goes into those drains.
That might be a question for your county engineer, what, what are the requirements for that?
I mean, I don't know if they're proposing anything for that at this stage.
Yeah, there's no outside storage.
No.
So it would just be the same as someone pulling up in parking, as, as if they were in their driveway.
Right.
At this stage in the presentation of the, the design of the project, the county engineer's office looks for concepts like detention basins, which show that the applicant and their engineer knows we have to meet a limited amount of runoff, we can't run off too much. You're right, anything dripping off the car, anything like that is an illicit discharge, but that's why we also have water quality laws.
Right.
Which means they're going to have to do clean water, they're going to have to have some sort of a system, well, water separators, extended detention, hydrodynamic separators, there's a lot of ways to resolve that. That's why we have that, that MS4 rule. So where it is or how it is, I don't think he knows. I don't know.
Hasn't been determined.
Yeah, it hasn't been determined. There isn't even enough grading here to kind of guess where it's going to be. We kind of know where it all goes now, so we'll look at that, and we'll require all of those things to, to, to be put together.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
All right, any additional questions for either the applicant or folks beside? Yes, sir, Mr. Hampton.
Well, to be sure I don't get accused of testifying here, someone asked the chair...
Okay.
If you can answer a question for me. What is, where do we go when we get, there's so many variances, or you feel, what's usual and what's not unusual? This seems very unusual to me. Is it or not? I mean, I'd just like to know if...
I would say, as chairman, it would be one of the applications that would be on the high end of requests for variances, uh, you know, I, I'd, I'd have to look back and...
Well, I understand you can ask for anything, but I just wanted to know from your history.
I, you know, I would, I would say, I could, you know, would, could classify this as, as on the high end of, of requests for variances. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, any additional? Our Mary Ann, Ms. Smith.
Mr. Hill, I thought you, I might have misunderstood you, but did you show a concept where you had the hash marks that, what it would look like if you got no variances at all?
Yes, this, this slide here.
How many units would you have if you got no variances at all?
Zero. Yeah, that, that was the intention, and I don't know if I stressed enough earlier this, the slide... the slide. If you factor in the 100-foot building setback requirement, if you factor in the 75-foot setback requirement adjacent to residential, if you factor in the required 50-foot landscape buffer area adjacent to residential, the hatched areas is what that illustrates. Regardless, sure, regardless of the use, whether you want a convenience store, a gas station, a restaurant...
I, cameras are this way.
Sure. I had complaints earlier that they couldn't hear, so I'm trying to go circle here. So regardless of the use, this property is owned I-2 and has these setback requirements. No matter what's proposed there, there's got to be some type of relief given to this property for any type of development to go in, in this location. That's, I think that's, this illustrates it perfectly.
Did you attend the neighborhood meeting?
Yes.
How many people were there?
We sent out approximately 100 notices. First off, this site was not required to have a neighborhood meeting, but we wanted to have one with the adjacent Cedar Point subdivision owners and directly adjacent property owners. Right. So if your property physically touches this property and is right across Cedar Point or 146, or if you lived in Cedar Point Road subdivision, this Cedar Point Villas, I think it's called, those notices were sent out. Approximately 25 people attended, most from the adjacent subdivision. Had about an hour and a half discussion, this was back in September. They had a lot of good questions and comments and concerns, a lot of the things you're hearing today. But I think at the end of that, and I don't know if any of them are here, none of them have spoken, but I think if they had some serious concerns remaining after that meeting, we would be hearing from them today.
Did you make any adjustments to your plan, your development plan, after that meeting?
The plan, the plan of the layout, not so much. We moved the rear building, I'm sorry. This building was moved to the right, you know, in this direction, about 20 feet where it was shown previously, so we could fit some parking in this location. Staffs, staff requested that we try to do that if we could. The changes were more so regarding the building materials that are proposed for the structures. We just kind of had some ideas of what we were going to present as far as building materials when we went to the neighborhood meeting. But after hearing their concerns, as Mr. Perkins and Mr. Rollins suggested, we listened to that and tried to incorporate some of their style and materials of their structures into our proposal.
Now, in the packet, it said for the detention basin, that that would be decided on-site after construction was started. How did it say that?
Yes, there's a note on the plan, note number 11.
And that means that you can decide not to do that and put something else there?
Well, one way or the other, the county is going to make us detain our runoff through county engineer's office. We had some discussions with county engineer's office and planning staff about how to accomplish our drainage situation. The initial thought is, well, let's put an on-site basin, like we've shown. They came up with the idea and asked us to look into it a little further. Well, what if you don't have to put an on-site basin? What if you could accomplish everything that's required by using or potentially modifying the existing basin in the Cedar Point subdivision? It's a very large basin. So after discussions on that, we decided that conceptually, at the preliminary plan stage which we're at, a note such as this on the plan that said that specific detail could be handled during construction plan, because it's going to take some more engineering analysis to determine which one of those routes is the best, would be appropriate.
All right, thank you.
All righty, any additional questions? We've got about five minutes left on our time. Mr. Williams?
Mr. Chairman, would it be appropriate to ask if anyone is here from the development that backs right up to this proposed application to hear, was at that neighborhood meeting, see if they have anything to say? We've not heard anything from them, can I ask that or not?
Well, they didn't, they didn't testify.
Are you here? What if he wanted to testify right now, could he?
Mr. Combs?
Yeah, we'd have to reopen the, you know, we're kind of past that, that point, or whatever. Because I, you know, we gave them opportunity to get up and speak and...
No, we did.
And we're, we'd have to kind of go backwards and then that kind of...
So you're telling me no?
Basically, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any additional questions for the folks that have testified? Okay, go ahead.
Another question about the concerns that were raised by folks relative to site and site distance. And I heard several people talk about the signage that is currently there was improperly placed or impeded the view, if you will, both left and right, is what I heard. I don't know that for a fact, and you'd holler at me for testifying if I did, but if, if that is the case, to whom do those individuals need to go to and say, you need to look at these signs and, and see if they interfere with site, or see if they're too close to the road or whatever, and move them?
Ms. Alvey?
Sign permits were issued for those signs, so we have the site locations, and they were approved by staff. So they're out of the site triangle, which is the requirement in the regulations.
Someone must have never went and looked.
So that, I mean, I guess that's where we are. If they were, they did apply evidently from what I'm hearing for those...
Okay, well, if I were a resident back there and I, okay, we've complied with...
They can call our office.
Land and zoning?
Mm-hmm, yes, sir. And then we can send our code enforcement officer to make sure that they were placed and the location is shown on the permit.
So there is some possible resolution of that. I mean, it's not just swept under the rug, somebody will go out and look at that.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. So folks, you know what to do. The, did we have a traffic study? We didn't have to have a traffic study.
Correct, it did not reach peak hours.
Okay. Were you asking about the neighborhood meeting? There was a concern about lowering property values. You know, in my opinion, this is going to lower property values. I think...
I'm just making sure, you're, you're not testifying to that, just repeating what you heard?
No, yeah.
Okay.
I just want to know if there's any professional documentation or that they lower property values. I mean, we hear they lower property values on this, we have towers lower property values, but there's not a professional person that works into that area that can say, yes, property values were this prior to this facility going in, or this tower going in, or whatever. And post-construction, the property values are down. So do we have any expert testimony on? Not that, your opinion's your opinion, that's wonderful. But do we have any expert testimony?
No, we did not, not during this area.
Okay. That's all for now, but I'll probably have something later.
Okay. All right, any additional questions, or from the commissioners? Yes, sir, Mr. Halfley.
Yeah, for the I-2 zoning, is there a purpose or a basis for the setbacks which are normally established, like we started off with here?
Ms. Alvey?
Staff had actually recommended, and part of the zoning update, to reduce the setbacks for industrial zone properties, and that was denied by fiscal court and had them to remain as they are today. Normally, the intention of larger setbacks is because of the type of business that would be in that zoning classification, and the effects that it would have on the adjoining properties.
I have just some questions.
Mr. Mesker, did I see your hand?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Alvey, I'm sorry.
Yep, I've got just a couple of questions. I guess, before the planner.
Before we get started, we're down to, our time has expired. Do you all want to add five minutes to the commissioner's time?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All right, my second. All those favor adding five minutes to our time, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Okay, go ahead.
A couple of questions. At the, you're reducing the size of the setbacks at your entrance at Cedar Point Road. And looking at it, I'm sure you must have looked, can semis get through there, make the turn, go all the way to the back, turn at where the storage unit's going to be at the far end and come back, with cars parked in front of the units?
I'm sorry, I'm going to make sure I follow your question. Are you, are you asking if semis can travel through our site and turn around afterward?
Yes, with cars parked in front of the storage units.
There is 20...
So they can't turn, you're saying it's going to be one way, they're going to loop it, right?
There's 26 feet of aisle space between each building. I mean, honestly, that maybe...
So if you park a car that might be 12 feet long, and then, let's say it's parked in front of its unit, and then a semi is going to get between that car and what's left going towards the back?
Yeah, I, I mean, honestly, I don't know how much semi traffic you would expect in a, in a site like this.
It's a storage unit.
Large semi traffic.
Mr. Perkins, could you each come up to the microphone?
Our experience with, with these storage facilities are small trailers and cars, or trucks, pickup trucks coming in them. There could be bigger vans, but usually no semi traffic comes in them at all. If they, like if someone were moving in town with a semi, they would load whatever they're going to put in storage onto a truck, or store it in a garage, put it in a truck at a later time, and bring it to the storage facility. But as far as moving semis, it's not designed for that. These aisles are a little bit wider, they're about six foot wider than, than normal. The perfect scenario is about 36 to 38 feet between the units, and I think we have 26. But you can go as little as 20. We just didn't want to impede or encroach further into the request for variances, so we tightened the site up about as tight as we think we can get it and, and have a comfortable turnaround for the, I call it, moving truck, you know, two men in a truck type, type vehicle.
Well, that's what you're anticipating, I guess, but...
Yes.
I would think someone's going to bring something in large to...
Yeah. And we, they, there is a staffed center on the site, it will be staffed during, during eight hours a day. And if someone pulls in with a semi, they will be stopped at the gate. They can't get through, and they will be forced to, to not come into the site. And any semi driver that has any experience would know not to pull into the site, seeing that it was fenced off and so forth.
Sir? Can I answer your questions?
No.
Okay.
The elimination of 19 parking spaces from the, it's required to have 30, you want to have 11. My experience with, well, no.
Be careful about testifying.
Yeah. So you only think 11 people will be in this whole facility at any one time?
Again, based on experience with, with my family's other facilities, there is hardly over two or three people in at a time. Now, I'm not saying there couldn't be 20 people in there at a time, but most of the time when they come in, they go right past the office, they don't even come in. They go to their unit, put the garage door up, there might be a person following them to help them move items. They put whatever they want in the storage or take out, and then they proceed to go around and back out the gate. And they're not there longer than 10 or 15 minutes. So to answer your question, this has a lot more parking than a facility that I know of. It's not in, not in Louisville, it's in Tampa, Florida. It's about 65,000 square feet, and this has two more parking spaces than that does. So there's not a lot of parking, there's going to be one person on site working in the office, that'll take up one parking space, and, you know, most people aren't even going to pull the parking spaces, they're going to pull up, commute to their unit and stop. And so that's going to leave all the parking open, open, I think, so. It's just based on experience. I, you know, no idea what's going to happen, but this is a much smaller facility than the one I'm talking about, so.
Alvey, just to make sure, your, our time has expired again, sir. Do we, do we need some, is there some additional questions that folks have, or do we need to, are we ready to move on? I don't want to, you know, I don't want to rush it, but we just got to be fair to, you know, everybody or whatever, so. Did you have some additional questions?
I have one more.
Okay, go ahead and finish up your one question then, that'll be fine.
Looking at the two residential where your properties butt up to the residential properties, one, it looks like you're cutting the setback by two-thirds. That's the front yard setback at Cedar Point Road. Am I right at that? You, the requirement is 100 feet, you want to go to 27 feet. So that's a 73-foot variance?
Trying to understand, are you talking about...
Number two of your variances.
I don't know what number two is. What?
I'm sorry, number three of your variances, it cuts it by two-thirds. It, it says it's abutting the Cedar Point Villas.
Oh, you're talking about...
On your variances.
On the back here, along the back property line?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, there is a 75-foot building requirement adjacent to residential, and we're proposing 25.
Okay. Okay. That's it.
Okay. All right, folks, let's, let's move on in to the rebuttal evidence and cross-examination by the applicant.
Can I say one more thing?
Okay, if it's quick, yes, sir.
So keep in mind that we're, we're 25-foot from the building, from the property line. And then the homes in Cedar Point are, they have backyards before you get to their house. So there's 75, 80 feet between the two. So it's not like we're butts right up together, so just wanted to add that.
Okay. All right, we're now down to rebuttal evidence and cross-examination by the applicant. So, Mr. Rollins, do you have a, any rebuttal evidence, sir?
Mr. Chairman, in my closing remarks, I'll cover the points.
You'll have an opportunity for final statement, but this is rebuttal, if you have anything to rebut.
Right. So I'll just save my comments until that time. I don't have any questions to ask.
All right. Let me move on in then too for the opposition. Do you all have any rebuttal evidence and cross-examination that you would like to present at this time? Anybody that spoke in opposition or had testimony opposed to the application?
I've got another question.
Well, yeah, just come back up, sir, if you would, need to get you on the microphone.
Somebody brought up about this water basin. All this water, the way I understood it's going to run through that subdivision, right?
That's what, the testimony that we had, we, the testimony that we've had so far is, this is preliminary, you know, that the county engineer has not really, you know, put up the numbers yet.
Well, the reason I'm saying that, I live back here, when they built that subdivision, I've never seen so much taken out rock in my life. It took them two or three years to get it, because they ain't have a solid rock. That water is going to run through that subdivision. The only place it can run is to the ditch along the road. A ditch along the road runs down toward Grand Villa. We have trouble right today with that ditch filling up with water running across the road. They have worked on it, worked on it, still doesn't. Okay, now, I live in the back of Grand Villa. We first moved in 20-some years ago, we didn't have all that strip mall and part, and another school, what have you. We have a creek that used to run down through there, but right across the foot of our house. They built all that stuff up there. Somewhere or another, the creek up above us has gotten messed up. The water floods the road down, down in, in the subdivision. Now, if we get all that much water there, these people up here are going to get a whole lot of water. And I'm wondering if they know how much is going through their, through their yards, through their streets when it rains real hard. Because the water in that basin ain't going to sink down into the ground, because it can't. So we got a big problem when it comes to them getting rid of the water, because the only place it can go is down on Old Cedar Point and go down the road there. I didn't think about that when I was up there.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Is there any additional rebuttal evidence? Mr. Tyson?
I assume on a rebuttal, I can ask a question.
Uh, no, not really. No, it's, it's rebuttal. No, it's rebuttal. If you wanted to rebut anything that's been said, you know, at that time, and then there's.
I'll just make a quick statement.
Okay.
The way I understood what the applicant said, that when they purchased this property, I believe it was in 2008, that it sounds like it was characterized as a speculative land purchase for future development. I just want to make sure everybody else heard that clearly as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, any further rebuttal? Yes, sir.
Thank you. Just a quick statement. They said that nobody from the adjacent homeowners association is here. Again, I'd just like to bring up, it is 9 o'clock in the morning on a Tuesday. Most of the folks that moved in there, from what I noticed, are younger couples. I would assume most of them are working. I don't know if any of them could make this meeting. That just, I have no idea what time they held their meeting because I lived in Grand Villa and didn't get to notice. So just want you all to think about that when you're making your considerations. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further rebuttal? Yes, sir?
I just wanted to bring up one other thing. It was stated that the fiscal court denied the changing of the variances for industrial. Under the Kentucky.
It was setbacks.
Setbacks.
Setbacks, yes.
KRS 100.243, I'm learning more than I ever wanted to, talks about finding necessary, findings necessary for granting variances. Part of that, in the first paragraph, says, "will not alter the essential character of the general vicinity and will not allow an unreasonable circumvention of the requirements of the zoning regulations." Just in support of what we said earlier.
Okay. Thanks, sir. All right, anyone else? Yes, sir?
I haven't sworn in.
Just come, all right, we'll swear you in here, and we'll get you to come forward.
I just got a rebuttal here.
Okay, hold on a second. Let me get you sworn in.
Swear in first. You tell me, swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
And I need your name and address for the record.
My name is Felix Ramirez. I live at 3502 Eastbrook.
Will you spell your last name, please? Okay.
Okay, I attended that meeting, okay? And he said that nobody was against it. There were a few, but we left the meeting as if there was nothing we can do, okay? That's how we felt, okay? Okay, the meeting, okay, he said about buying, nobody wanted to buy the property. I've only lived here since, it'll be two years in April, okay? And what I heard at the time, the key homes did want to buy that property. They built more homes on it, but I don't know what the reason was or was not, okay? That's all I got to say.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're down here to final statement of the opposition. Is there anyone that has spoken in opposition that would like to have a final statement? Mr. Tyson? You have five minutes, so.
I just want to do, just close on three main statements. First statement is, it was a speculative land purchase. I don't wish anybody ill will. I'm a very pro-development guy, but I don't think it's a responsibility of this commission to bail somebody out of a bad business decision. I don't think that's what you're here for. You're for good property development. The second point, really important that I want you to think about, self-storage, mini warehouse is only permitted in I-1 and I-2. And in I-1 and I-2, that's where we get the big setbacks. As far as the applicant having other options, he can go for zone changes. That's probably, you know, a more appropriate thing. So I just, and finally, when you ask for these kind of setback variances, I don't think without a doubt you can say, "This is unreasonably circumventing our regulations." Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else that would like to add to the closing statement? Yes, ma'am?
I think I'll go back to Mr. McWilliams' question about the property valuation. And I was doing my little research, you know how Google helps us all, right? As much as anything, I think it's the perception of the storage buildings. You see some different issues there with Realtor.com and Home Buyer Guides, things like that, that it's the perception that sometimes it's made difficult for people to resell their homes because of the storage buildings being there. So I would just like for you to say, just consider their perception, not only, it may not take the home value down, but it may be difficult for that person to sell their homes. So in a way, it does take the buying value down on that home. So please consider that if it was next to your home. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else on opposition? Final statement. All right, Rowan, we'll let you add the final statement here on the applicant.
Thank you. As an attorney, sometimes it's hard to sit still when you start hearing hearsay. And you see members of the commission that want to testify. Mr. Falvey and Ms. Davis, I think you probably would have liked to have testified as well because we do have someone who is an expert as far as home values are concerned, but she is a member of the commission. We've presented a proposal here that we honestly feel is the best use of the property. And I know there are people, obviously, that have disagreed with our position, but the best use possibly of this property, it doesn't present big traffic issues, which are so common with strip centers, with fast food restaurants, with banks. It, you don't have that. You don't have the odors. You don't have the noise. You don't have the lighting issues. You have none of that, none of that with this property. And as far as circumventing, as I stated before, this proposal and the setbacks that are needed to use this property, to be able to use this property as productive, tax-producing parcel in the county, any proposal is going to need these variances. They may not be quite as much in the way of the percentages, but that's why you're here. We propose, and you make the decision, and we feel that what we've asked for is very realistic. This property was, the residential property that adjoins this used to be this identical zoning, I-2. And it was changed, leaving this parcel to do something with. This county, relatively speaking, does not have a lot of industrial zoning. Storage facilities such as this proposed are something that's in demand. More of it is needed. Dan did his homework on this. And as I said, this proposal that we have before you is appropriate for this community. If you look up and down the highway from the massive distribution center to the facilities that manufacture and produce food products, to the restaurants, to the Jazzercise facilities, this is a good transition, sitting on the corner of a busy highway in Cedar Point Road that is only going to have access from Cedar Point Road. The engineering of the water distribution leaving this property is still yet to be done, obviously, because you don't do all of that work until you know your concept is approved. Then you do it. And if it doesn't work, this facility is not going to be built if it doesn't work. And we have to coordinate that with the county engineer. So all that work is yet to be done, yes. And I understand it's a concern. It would be for me as well. Mr. McWilliams, I think, or Mr. Falvey, one of you were talking about the semi trucks entering the property. That can be easily remedied through the lease agreement, putting the restrictions and letting the people know that this is the largest truck that you can bring in here. And if you go to any other storage facilities, at least that I've been to, you're not going to turn a tractor-trailer truck around in any of them. So we will address that in the lease agreement if this is approved and we're able to build this facility. Thank you. I ask for your vote of approval for this. I think, Dan, do you have another comment?
I just want to reiterate what Ray has said here. You know, we started down the path with retail. We started down the path with office product. We do both of those products, Jefferson County and in Oldham County. We think that this storage facility is going to provide low impact on the sewers. There's actually going to be one bathroom on this whole entire site. If it were a commercial site, it would really impact the sewer system. The stormwater runoff is going to be contained onsite, as Ray said, as Mike has said, and that engineering will be done after the fact, or if we do get approvals. It's going to be a very good-looking facility. We currently keep the corner mode. It's actually finished mode. We don't just bush hog the property. We try to work with the county to keep this property looking good for the scenic byway, 146 byway that we have up through there. So I think it's a great add for the community. We'd like to have your vote to build it. I guess if we don't get your vote, the next thing would be to maybe do the downzoning. But I'm not sure that that's even doable. Again, the parcel started out as industrial zoning. The residential piece was carved out of the whole parcel. Cedar Point Road divided the piece. And so we have the large parcel on the left side, and then our parcel. And then it was divided again to create the residential parcel. And then we were left with this piece. We knew the setbacks when we bought it. Variances are very common. So we thought that we could get variances, even if it were a commercial strip center, which we have talked to the county about previously. It would require variances and so forth. So appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Perkins, thank you. With that, docket PZ 18024 is now closed. And as always, I'll call on staff to outline what's being requested here. This one's a little bit different than we normally consider. The development plan, we will consider last because it's, we have to do the variances and the waivers first. We have five variance waiver requests, and we have two waiver, I mean, two variances, excuse me, five variances and two waivers. We'll do the variances first, and I'll have Ms. Alvey outline what's being requested on the first variance, and then we'll go through and vote on those separately. If they all pass, and then the two waivers pass, then we'll consider the development plan. So, Ms. Alvey?
Your first request is for a front yard setback variance for the property or for the development along Highway 146. The required setback is 100 feet, and the proposed setback is 36 feet. So the variance being requested for the first item is 64 feet. And again, this is a variance for the front setback along Highway 146.
Okay. Hey, Mr. Combs, is there anything you need to add to this?
No, other than in, you know, in deciding a variance, you may consider several factors. And I don't know that you want to read those, Amy, what those are.
And as stated by someone in the audience, to either approve or deny the variance, you have to decide whether it will adversely affect the public health, safety, or welfare, if it alters the essential character of the general vicinity, or if it will cause a hazard or a nuisance to the public. And then you also consider, would it be considered an unreasonable circumvention of the requirements of the zoning regulations? And there's a sample motion to approve or deny in your staff report.
All right, you have heard what's been outlined here on docket PZ 18024. And as stated earlier, we will consider the variances one at a time. And the first variance is the required 100-foot setback, and it's proposed 36 feet for a variance of 64 feet. So the chair would entertain a motion on the first variance request. Mr. Hampton?
I make a motion to deny the variance because of the extreme of the percentage of the setback and the amount of the setback. Requesting.
Okay. Mr. Combs, is that inadequate reasons?
Item D here, it will allow an unreasonable circumvention of the requirements of the zoning regulations because, and he made that statement as to his reason.
Right.
Mr. Hampton, do you agree with that?
Yes, I do.
So that would be your motion?
Yes.
Okay, motion to deny the first variance from, it was required 100 feet. The proposal is 36 feet, which was a variance request of 64 feet. So your motion is to deny that?
Yes, sir.
Based on?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Based on what we just outlined by our staff attorney?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, I've got multiple seconds here. Do we have any discussion now? And this is the first of five variances that we would need to vote on. Now, we'll see what the outcome of this one is. If this fails, then I'll talk, we'll talk to our attorney as to whether we consider the rest of them. Because I don't think we can move forward if any of them fail. So, but let's consider this one now. And is there any discussion on the 64-foot variance request? Yes, sir, Mr. McWilliams?
Mr. Chairman, I think what I'm about to say would be applicable to all of these variances. You know, before we make our minds up, one way or the other, I just hope that all the commissioners would also take a look at the fact that the normal R2 or I2 acreage is much larger than this particular acreage. So I would say, ask ourselves, does that make a difference? Does it make it more palatable to say, if these variances were on larger property, they may indeed be not a problem at all? But this is a smaller property, so it's not really comparing apples to apples. And I'm not saying one way or the other, but I'm just saying the size of this tract is much smaller than the normal I2. So is it reasonable that the variances would be different? And still acceptable and not interfering with the health and welfare, creating a problem for the area, a hazard, a nuisance? Just a little food for thought.
Okay. Any further discussion on this motion to deny? Yes, sir?
Mr. Chairman, you say we. Excuse me, would it be appropriate to follow up Mr. McWilliams' in a general discussion about this and all the other waivers and variances, since we're taking them first?
Sure. I mean, you can, in discussion, we can, you know, discuss what's on the floor, which is the motion to deny the first variance request. So technically, you know, we're just considering the one right now.
If I step over, stop me.
Okay.
First of all, I think this is, this particular one, and, well, this particular one, well, it's an attempt to sort of circumvent the regulations that we have, we have them. We've dealt with this as the commission for a number of years about how to make these waivers and variances, et cetera. And the rules and regulations are there for the reason. Fiscal court just recently understand upheld the fact that they want these setbacks and everything we have now to stay this way.
One caveat, with the understanding that people can apply for variances. For that process.
Yeah, okay.
They understood that they had to go through a variance process.
That's why you have a Board of Adjustments and Appeals.
Well, with due process, with due process as an alternate to that. I get the feeling that this ordinance particularly, as well as, well, I won't say the ones to come.
How about the variance?
It feels, yes. It feels as if we're trying to design the property to fit the program, to fit the proposal. So I'm sort of expanding on Mr. McWilliams' feeling about what, why it's denying, why he supports the denial.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion to deny the first variance? Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Douglas, and then we'll get Ms. Bonnet.
I guess, you know, I look at it as the front yard setback on Highway 146, which is the variance we're looking at, and the variance request is 64 feet. Obviously, the applicant was aware of the situation they were facing with the I-2, with the only having 175 feet of depth. But I guess my concern was, the whole time, was that we didn't hear any conversation from the applicant that they would be willing to decrease one of the storage units for some of the setbacks. Obviously, it's cost effective to have more storage units than have less storage units. But I didn't see any options or any consideration provided to try to reduce some of the setbacks, maybe variance request. So, you know, I just kind of looked at it like, could they have done away with one of the storage units and did a different way of proposing the developmental plan on the property? So anyway, it's just my concern. It's a huge setback.
Ms. Bonnet?
Kind of following up on what Mr. McWilliams also said, to look at, the setbacks are set at the level they are for a reason, for that particular zoning. Unfortunately, with hindsight being 2020, when the development was rezoned to allow the homes to be built, at that time, that lot was a large, appropriate industrial zone property. When we decided, or the committee at the time, changed the zoning to residential and left that sliver of property, if utilizing the setbacks that are set in our standards makes that property unusable, to me, that says that that property is now not properly zoned. That is an option, and I feel that cutting the setbacks by this extreme, just to make something fit, is circumventing the purpose of those zoning regulations in the first place.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion to deny the first variance request? Any further discussion?
Question, Mr. Chairman?
Well, okay, and then let me get Ms. Davis. She hadn't asked, discussed anything yet, Ms. Davis? And I'll get you, Mr. McWilliams.
I have one comment that you can, under the zoning regulations, as I usually read them, and you can do a lot of things under the industrial zoning, coming down to all the commercial zoning. So the property has a lot of uses besides what their proposed use is. And so I think that giving all these setbacks is not what the zoning was set up to do. And I think that we have to look at that.
Mr. McWilliams?
I did hear you correctly when you said if we disapprove this first variance, it were done.
Correct. They cannot be, the development plan cannot be approved if any of these develop, either the variances or the waivers are denied. And so, Mr. Combs, is that correct?
That's correct. The understanding is, just be realistic about this. You've got a motion on the floor to deny. You've all been talking about your reasons for either denying it or approving it, or what the concept is in your own minds. The reality of it is, you've got five, six, seven, maybe, separate motions. But if the motion to deny on the very first variance request is approved, then the denial is approved, theoretically, the testimony has been, they can't do the project unless there's some modification of the current development plan. Because if you've denied the one variance, and they've said they can't do this project unless you approve this variance, there's no reason to go through the remaining variances.
I've got a question here, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, just a moment. Let me, did that complete your statement, Mr. Combs?
That's it, yeah.
Okay, all right. Yes, sir?
I'd just like to call questions, let's have a vote.
Oh, okay, all right. Let me just make sure that we've got all the discussion out of the way here. I know questions have been called, but, Mr. Perkins?
Well, the, I certainly would not take on Mr. Combs. But this does not prevent them, were we to deny this first variance, it does not prevent the applicant from coming back to us with some modification of this plan, because they've clearly heard variances and the percentage of variances are a major concern to this commission.
They have the option to come back, and they could come back, you know, several different ways or whatever, you know, with a different.
Include a downzone or...
Correct. They can apply for a new set of variances with a revised plan and come back before the commission.
Okay. All right. I think we're probably had quite a bit of discussion. I think we'll now, as chair, I'll call for the vote on the number one, first variance, number one, which was the, there was required 100-foot. The proposal was 36-feet variance for a requested variance of 64 feet. So that is, and the motion on the floor is a motion to deny that particular variance. So, Ms. Nun, if you would, let's take the vote, and this is a motion to deny.
Okay, Mr. Hampton?
Yes, a vote yes is to deny, correct?
Correct. A vote yes is a motion to deny.
Just wanted to be sure. Thank you, yes.
Mr. Hafling?
Yes.
Mr. Finney?
Yes.
Mr. Falvey?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. McWilliams?
Yes.
Mr. Mesker?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Ms. Bonnet?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
All right, the motion on the first variance, which was a variance requested of 64 feet, that motion to deny passes on a vote of 12 to 0. So with that, as you heard staff outline and our staff attorney outline, Mr. Combs, we will not consider the other four variance requests or the two waivers. So at this point, the motion, or the docket on the development plan will not be considered today because the first variance, first waiver request, or, excuse me, first variance request failed. So we will, we do have a couple of things we need to finish up, commissioners, before we adjourn for today, but docket, get the right docket number here. Docket PZ 18024 is not approved today. All right, with that, we've got a couple of things. Mr. Falvey, I think you, or, excuse me, no, Mr. Hafling, you had some training that you needed to get approved?
Oh, I had a request to...
Is your mic on?
Is your mic on, sir?
I had a request through Amy if she would approve some training I took through the Kentucky Bar Association, which was Supreme Court update, Court of Appeals update, and District Court updates, and new legislation.
And that, how many hours was that?
3.5 hours.
Okay. Commissioners, was it okay we get a motion to approve his training of the 3.5 hours?
Motion approved.
Okay, Mr. Alvey to approve. Mr. Mesker, seconds? Okay, all those in favor of approving the House Bill 55 training hours for Mr. Hafling, signify with a Saint I. All opposed, no? Okay, you have 3.5 hours, sir.
Thank you.
All right, and, Ms. Alvey?
Regarding next month, the meeting date has changed, so be sure to mark that on your calendar. It's December the 18th at 9:00 a.m. Our filing deadline is tomorrow. I'm not certain. We may have one application that may become, come before the planning commission, but as always, staff will email you out on Thursday to let you know whether or not we will have a meeting on December the 18th. It will have to be a shorter meeting, because that is also a fiscal court day, so we cannot go past 2:00 p.m. But as always, staff will notify you and let you know.
All righty. If you don't talk to you all, everybody have a Merry Christmas. So we will stand adjourned. Okay? All righty. Ms. Finney? Are we getting any closer on, being able to?
Waiting for another complete bid.
Oh, okay, okay.
The guy that built the building up in Carroll County for Angela.
Okay.
He came down and looked at it, and everything, sent him all the information, and he requests further information, and so that's...